Thank you. Hello and good evening. This is the March 8th, 2021 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. As you can say, as you can see, I've contradicted myself already because most of us are here in person. We are dealing with some tech technology logistics that we're hopefully working through, but hopefully folks can hear us tonight as we move forward. Before we move the meeting along any further, would like to acknowledge the past couple of days, we lost one of our teachers, Mark Green, tech ed teacher here at the high school for many years. Passed away suddenly and just wanted to acknowledge his passing and certainly his family and his friends are in our thoughts and I know he will be missed with his, by his companions at the high school. So if we could just please take a moment of silence to honor Mark Green, please. Thank you. Okay, we will start with a roll call to my left, please.
I'll go with Martin Boucher.
Greg Tom.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of school.
There's Leo.
Minutes for approval. Motion, please.
We'll approve the February 22nd, 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill. Second by Beth. Discussion. Hearing none, all's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Okay, we have an opportunity, or actually, I'm going to ask first a few amendments to the agenda this evening. I will entertain a motion to move item number 5.1.2 and flip flop that to 5.1.3 and also add under new business item 7.4, which is the memorandum of understanding dated March 8th, 2021. Somebody wants to make that motion, please. Motion made by Bill. Second by Sarah. Discussion. All is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And with that, now we will move forward with our opportunity for visitors to speak. If you are joining us via Zoom this evening, now would be your opportunity to speak to the committee. If you'd like to raise your hand, we will call on you as we go. Okay. Is it Adina? Jamie, if you could bring in, please.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Adina Elphon, and I am the mother of a high school senior and a high school freshman. And on behalf of the Parents Partnering for In-Person Learning Group, I'm asking that the school committee please abide by the state commissioner of education's decision to eliminate the hybrid model and allow families with students in grades K through 12 to have the choice for either in-person, full-time, or remote, starting on April 5th. I'd like you to move from the six-foot regulation to the three-foot distance with mask regulation to make this possible. And I ask that you use the funds allocated to each school to purchase any remaining equipment you might feel is necessary to make this possible, whether that be tents for outdoor learning spaces, additional lunch spaces, portable barriers, whatever it might be that you need. Many other Massachusetts districts have implemented this model successfully already, and I and many others believe that it's now time for East Long Meadow to do the same. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Adina. Appreciate you speaking tonight. We'll go with Chris Peteros, please, Jamie.
Can you hear me now, Greg?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris, please.
I'm sorry, as soon as you said that, it kicked me off and I got back on.
Yeah, you're on. Go ahead, please. Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity. Okay, you know, in the interest of getting our kids back to school, I'd like to direct your attention to a letter, maybe you're already familiar with it, that was written and signed by a group of infectious disease specialists, pediatricians, and public health experts. In fact, your group was made up of 66 of these experts, and it was written to the commissioner, Commissioner Riley, the Department of Education. Now, again, maybe you're already familiar with this, maybe not, but I did want to bring it to your attention and any of the parents listening out there. Encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's a pretty quick read, only one page, and you can find it at the Mass Department of Education website under the March 1st heading, under that, Board Recap, and you'll find a link to the letter in the second paragraph. Okay, so basically, this group of experts states unequivocally that only in rare instances has there been any proof of in-school transmission of COVID, and this holds true even when community prevalence rates are significantly higher than those set forth by the CDC. In fact, the CDC itself released a study showing the community spread is not an indicator of within-school transmission, and the schools tend to be at much lower risk than other community locations. So basically, prevalence within the community has nothing to do with transmission in the school, so it doesn't matter if the town is in the red. It doesn't seem to affect transmission in the schools. So they go on to say that private and public schools within Massachusetts have opened with as little as three feet of distance between students and have proven that along with other mitigation measures, which I'm sure we're already doing, masks, hand washing, symptom screening, et cetera, in-school transmission is exceedingly rare. And that is a direct quote from that letter, exceedingly rare. Also, I would direct your attention, if you do take a look at this letter, to the fourth paragraph, which addresses the effect of remote learning on our children. I'm quite sure we're all aware of this by now, but I'd like to read that paragraph anyway. So it states, "We have also seen that the risks to students of not being in school are dramatic. Students are more isolated, learning from home, and consequently suffer more mental health issues as well as physical health concerns, increased rates of non-accidental trauma, and learning loss. Remote learning is not a reasonable long-term substitute for in-person school. Every effort must be made to return the students to Massachusetts to in-person education in order to combat these other concerns that are also of public health importance." And lastly, I'd like to address vaccinations. It is my understanding that this Thursday vaccinations will be available to teachers and other educators, so I hope that everyone has a plan to get a vaccination lined up as soon as possible. We've already heard from the CDC that vaccination is not a prerequisite to getting back to school. However, I'm sure teachers would feel much more comfortable having been vaccinated. I know I do. A recent study from Canada and our own FDA's data shows now that two weeks after the first injection of Pfizer or Moderna produces approximately 92% efficacy. So there's really no need to wait for the second injection to feel protected. In fact, that second one only takes you from 92 up to 95. So if April 5th is the proposed date of return, there is plenty of time to get everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible. So given all of this, I can't imagine any coherent argument against the return to full-time school. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Chris, I appreciate you speaking tonight and thanks for checking in. Jamie, we have Kate Dugan out there, please.
Hi, folks. Kate Dugan, I have a fourth grader at Maple Shade, and I just have three quick requests of you. The first is, it would be really helpful, I think, for me, for sure, to have some clarity about what exactly the commissioner's powers at this point now are. How does that affect the capacity for the committee to make decisions and what kinds of power does he have to overrule those decisions? Secondly, I hope that, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like things are going to go fully in person. If you decide to get rid of the hybrid option, please do allow a robust remote option for those of us who are concerned by the three-foot regulations or have other family concerns or other reasons to not send our students into buildings. And then third, if that requires, you know, creative remote teaching options or other sort of out-of-the-box thinking, just please, I encourage and hope that you bring to the conversation the kind of creativity that I know that you all are capable of. So thanks so much and good luck with these tough conversations.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate you speaking tonight. Take care. Okay, last chance. If anyone else would like to speak, now would be your chance. Just hit the raise hand button on your Zoom screen. Seeing none, we will move on with our agenda. Okay, we have committee and subcommittee communications. Who would like to start this evening? Beth?
I did want to send a shout out to Bert Twine. I hear that their team is doing fantastic. I know that they won the regional. I don't know where they've done at this point, but we are proud of them, and I'm happy they were able to do it through all of the process we're doing.
Career Tech, the CTEC Student of the Month Award. Abigail Parsons for Cosmetology. Kate Picknoll for Early Education Chair One. And Landscape Technology Horticultural, too, for just more. Congratulations to those two. Great job.
Just for an update for everyone, the Community Preservation Committee met this week. They have approved funding for the track project out of the CPC funds. Came out of, it's to come out of undesignated funds of that, so we'll move forward with that project as we get more. Oh, that's right. First in the county council, that's right. Yep. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on then. We have our local health professionals here this evening, so we're going to talk about what's going on in East Long Meadow and some thoughts as we move forward. Start, Gordon.
I think we have Dr. Clark, Ms. Lombard, and Ms. Patraski probably in the audience. If they can raise their hand. They're all, are they? Okay, great. So as I think our parents know, Wednesday, district reports positive cases that have shown up in the school system. And so this past Wednesday, basically be from 3:3 back to 2:24 when I reported earlier. And so what we saw in the district was a total of four positive cases, two at the high school, one at Meadow Brook. Excuse me, apologize. Three at the high school, one at Meadow Brook. And then we also get information through our public health office for positives that, you know, may be remote, and we actually did have seven positives, student aids, that are remote and are not necessarily coming in, they might be in that cohort C. And so those get reported. Desi actually only reports out the ones that are in the building. One significant factor through all of this that we're seeing is that even though we have positives, unfortunately, that do come in from some type of community spread, we're not seeing the close contacts. We go through identifying close contacts, and our families have been fantastic, our staff has been fantastic in quarantining, and we're not seeing the people who have been identified as close contacts becoming positive. Not only are they, have they been great quarantining, they'll go out and get tested and then share the results with us, which has been fantastic.
Okay, Amy, do you want to start off what you're seeing in town, some of your thoughts?
Sure. So yeah, our numbers for the month of February have looked really good compared to where they were post the holiday surge. I'll give you a quick comparison. So in December, we had 351 total cases. In January, we had 288 total cases, and then in February, we dropped down to 130 total cases. Thirty-six of those were pediatric. I think, I'll echo what Gordon said, is we are seeing students who, or staff members who are positive, but we are not seeing in-school-based transmission, where people are doing a really good job of alerting the schools of their close contacts, so we can remove them from the school and quarantine them before they ever get the chance to start spreading within the building. So that's, that's been really fantastic.
Dr. Clark, how about from your perspective, things you're seeing? I'm sure you've heard a little bit about CDC today coming out with some new parameters. As we discussed last week, we're potentially looking at bringing more students in person. Some of your thoughts, Dr. Clark, please.
I can echo what Amy said. What we're seeing in our practice and the communities is the same. Everything's, the numbers for active infection have gone down tremendously. The other thing we're seeing is that initially, we thought children were just major spreaders, and that's not the case anymore. Especially if they are asymptomatic, they're not really spreading disease. So I think that's part of what's driving the send them back to school. If they're well enough to be at school, they're probably well enough that they don't have a significant disease. If they have exposures at home and stuff like that, that makes, you know, it makes more sense to keep them out, so that we know they probably have it. But I think it's going to be very safe if we send them all back to school. I think we're also seeing in the southern states and even in Connecticut and the eastern part of our state that they have kids in school almost 100%, not at the six-foot distance, and they're not seeing any spread. So I think there's motivation for us to get our kids back in.
Kelly, fortunately, I had an opportunity via Mr. Mackey to meet with some high school students last week. We talked about contact tracing, isolation, quarantining. Kelly, if you don't mind, can you just walk us through and just educate all of us again? If there's a positive case, we're going to hear from the Health Department, is that what happens? And then if you could just take us through what the expectations of the students and the families are as we go forward?
So like Amy and Dr. Clark both said, families are doing a terrific job alerting us. So a lot of times, we know about the positives before we hear from the Board of Health. And in that case, then we are able to isolate families, quarantine families if we need to. If we have a, you know, the parents are telling us about the positives, so we're able to go back and figure out who the close contacts are in school. And, you know, we are, the school nurses are actually educating the families about what to do. So if you're a close contact, then day five or day six, you should get tested, and that way we can figure out, were you in school? Were you out of school? Who are the close contacts? The principals are identifying, are sending out a letter to staff, and I believe Gordon is sending out letters to the families. So if you don't hear from us, then we know that you're not a close contact, but they are alerting families and staff when there is a positive in the building. And I think everyone is doing a great job of reporting families, especially, like I said, I'll get a call from the contact tracing collaborative, and I will say to them, we already know who the positives are, we already know who the close contacts are, we're actually sending the information to the contact tracing, so they have the parent's name, address, phone number, when we called them, and it's just, it's working out beautifully. Everybody is contributing where they should.
One of the questions I get a lot, if you don't mind, from parents is if they're close contacts, should I have my kids tested if they're not showing any symptoms? And one of the reasons, one of them, one of the great reasons about getting them tested is that if they do, now that we're going back in full, if they were to become a close contact again, and they are asymptomatic positive, is that they don't need to quarantine for 90 days. So if your child does contract COVID, but is one of the lucky people that doesn't have any symptoms, and you get them tested and they are positive, once they do their 10 days of isolation, if they're exposed at soccer or basketball or anywhere else at school, there's no need to redo that quarantine. So it is a way of kind of getting a get-out-of-jail-free card for any other exposure.
So as we start to talk about bringing more students for in-person learning, and we discuss shortening the social distancing, currently a minimum of six feet now, potentially would go to a minimum of three, although it may look more like four to five feet. Certainly, when we're on masks, it would be six feet all the time, so lunches or mask breaks, we would require six feet. We would look to potentially have more students on buses. So my general question is around, as parameters change for social distancing, some mitigation, things that we, things we can do to mitigate the risk, maybe talk about potentially the increased risk. We have to be, we have to be honest that by bringing students a little closer together, there must be some potentially increased risk. But if any of you want to just start to discuss that topic for us from the health perspective as we look to bring more students in, some concerns, some things that we should look for, that we can do, does anybody want to jump on that topic? Amy?
I'll jump on it in terms of contact tracing. So if we're sitting six feet apart, if we have students three feet apart, the number of students when we do a trace back is going to double. So instead of just getting the students on the peripheral and calling them contact, close contacts, we're now going to have to go two out from the potential, from the positive person. So we might see a lot more quarantine, preventative quarantine from this new setup.
Because the criteria for direct contact will still be the same, there would just be more inside that radius.
Bubble. Yeah. And DPH, you know, the state, Commissioner Riley has changed that to three feet. DPH has not changed that. It's still six feet in DPH's mind, so when we do that contact tracing, it will still be the six-feet radius.
Okay. How about, we're coming up on spring, opening windows, things of that nature. Certainly, hand washing will continue to do. We have plenty of PPE on hand, sanitizers. We will certainly know where all the students are with seating charts for contact tracing. Anything else that we should think about as we start to discuss bringing in more students? Anyone can think of?
I think we can continue to ask that when the kids are outside of school, that we ask them to practice, to use the same practices they do in school. If they're getting together, you know, the weather's warming up, they're going to be getting together outside. Can we keep them in masks? And give them some distance while they're playing to help decrease the spread outside of school, and that will also decrease the spread in school.
Right. I've heard it said before that if you just assume that others have COVID, you will protect yourself and protect them potentially if we, if we mask and social distance when we're with others, not in our household. Okay. Any questions, concerns from the committee?
I wanted to say that testing is now, because there's so few cases, it's much faster. The turnaround time is 12 to 24 hours. So if you go into the Eastfield Mall, the lines aren't long anymore. We can usually get testing on this, in this, within the same day, and then the results are back within 12 to 24 hours. So that should help us with our mitigation.
Paul, so at this point, Dr. Clark, you just mentioned the Eastfield Mall. You would suggest that for testing right now? That seems to be the best option, one of the best one?
You know what? I think they're all really good right now. I ordered a test at 3:00 last week, Thursday, and I had it back by 7:00 due date, which was never, ever the case. So it was four hours turnaround.
And if fair to say that if a student or a staff member feels the need that they should get a test, there's a reason for that, they should wait for their test results to return to school? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Sarah?
Oh, I was just going to ask, since we do have the health professionals with us this evening, any other thoughts since it still is widely known about the variants? Any information that you can share with the committee relative to that, and if there's any increased concerns on your behalf based on those being prevalent?
I think we need, well, I'm sure Amy could speak to this more readily, but I think we have to assume that they're present. The variants are within our area, and still the same mitigation procedures are keeping them at bay. Some of them are more highly contagious than the original, so we do have to worry about that. Some of them are more harmful and making people more sick, but for the most part, they are not. And lastly, the vaccine seems to be giving us some sort of protection, so those of us who are higher risk and already vaccinated have some protection from the variants.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Clark, you hit it right on the head. I think if we, we know that there in Massachusetts, they test about a quarter of all swabs that are done to see the new variant present. We know that they're here. I don't know that they're in East Long Meadow, so by here, I mean the state. They don't, they don't let us know if our tests are coming back with the new variant. So I was just going to clarify that. But I think if we start to see some of the variants that Dr. Clark was talking about, we're going to really, we'll see clusters. We'll be able to identify those, I think, pretty quickly, because like she said, they are more contagious. So we will see more spread than we're seeing right now with the regular COVID.
That's not a deterrent to us moving forward, potentially with bringing more kids back.
Not this time.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Other questions, thoughts from the committee? Okay, as always, we are so thankful for your time. I know it's very valuable, all of you very busy, but we continue to lean on your knowledge as we move forward here. So want to thank all of you again for joining us this evening and for participating with your information, certainly. Again, so grateful for that. So if there are no other questions, we can let our health, health team go. Okay?
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night. Okay. Good discussion on that. And kind of rolls right into the next one. So we're going to go on to 5.1.3, which is a discussion of potential change to the East Long Meadow Public School Instructional Learning Model. Do you want, you want to jump on it right now? Yeah, okay.
If Ms. Brown is in the audience, I want to bring her in as well. But just the public comment, I think some of the parents alluded to the fact that on Friday, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education met, that's the State Board of Education, and they did grant Commissioner Riley emergency authority to decide as to what instructional model will be counted towards the required time on learning for schools. So that's basically the change. And what that does is that he had, at the prior meeting, outlined a proposal where he would like to see elementary students first coming in on April 5th, and he would like districts to start planning for that, and then secondary students to follow. And I don't think he designated a date for secondary students, but as we go through our preparation, we'll be able to address that as well. So as of April 5th, what does that mean? That means as of April 5th, districts would no longer be able to utilize a hybrid instructional model or a fully remote instructional model and have the time count towards the regular, regulated amount of time on learning. Certainly, the hours we put in prior to April 5th count. However, it takes a district usually all year to get to the required time on learning numbers. And so that's how Commissioner Riley then sort of put some teeth, if you will, into asking schools to return. There are waiver processes that schools and districts can look at, and those, I think, will be forthcoming in terms of outline, but the examples that at least were outlined for superintendents were more around districts that have never even gotten into hybrid, that they've been predominantly remote for the entire school year. That might be a district who can put in for a waiver and maybe start on April 5th with a hybrid model and move accordingly. Given that Commissioner Riley had outlined his proposal back in February, we did, as a leadership team and a school committee, begin planning we did, as a leadership team and a school committee, begin planning for this possibility. And so what does that mean? Well, that means that, just as you've heard from the health officials, that we will have to probably, in some cases in the classroom, go from a distance now that's six feet, and in some cases, well beyond six feet. And we may have to come into a distance that's probably more around four or five in most cases. And I think Mr. Thompson had said earlier that anytime we are without masks, we will be six feet or more. And so that would be mask breaks and certainly lunch. And so those are all things that take some time to plan for because each school right now is running lunch with a hybrid model. And so you have a reduced number of students that are in the building on each day. And so that's where the leadership team has started to look and see, what does that look like? How do you figure out and schedule lunch? And we will be prepared to have our students, for any students in the elementary who want to, on April 5th, join us for full in-person learning. To one of the parents' comments, we will also be prepared to allow the option for families who do not at this time want to send their students in, or maybe their student was in hybrid, but they're concerned about the reduction in spacing between the desks. They can opt to remain fully remote. So really, you're going from, let's say, four cohorts down to two cohorts. Families soon will have to make a decision as to whether they're coming in fully, which means every day, every week, or they're going to be fully remote. And we will be getting more information out to families probably in the next week or two. But that decision, we think, in order for us to fully prepare, will have to be made by March 22nd, Monday, March 22nd. So that would be a week's shift from, say, the 15th that we've previously asked families to alert us about any type of change. But also, I want to bring at this point, Mrs. Brown in, just to speak to some of the things that I think Dr. Clark was getting at. And we know it's happening with our students, that it can be, distance learning can be challenging, and it is. And so we know that some students are struggling with it and are also having social and emotional challenges that we are trying to support, but that's not something that's easily supported in a remote setting. And so I think, actually, it's already queued up on the screen. Ms. Brown was going to walk us through, and this survey actually is still running. These are the results as of today.
So as you know, we team up with Panorama to distribute social, emotional wellbeing surveys to our students, both to identify students who might need extra support, get feedback, and also to look for trends. And so the nice thing about it is that it's nationally normed. And you can see that in terms of, this is the three to five survey, in terms of supportive relationships, positive feelings, and even challenging feelings, we are doing better than a lot of other places in the nation. That said, having 60% of kids favorably speaking about having challenging feelings is not so great. So, and this was mentioned earlier too, in terms of emotional regulation, which is another area where kids really do get cues from other peers and learn so much in person. So that's the three to five. And it was a similar breakdown in the high school and the middle school, the six to 12 survey, where we were, did not as well in terms of that emotional regulation. And the distance learning environment as well, as amazing as our teachers are, it's still really difficult to get kids connected to the content and keep them engaged in this kind of context. Having taught, teaching graduate classes and trying to keep grad students engaged, and obviously, they're older. So it's challenging. And so just to reiterate what Mr. Smith said, you know, we are doing the best we can, and we're doing, I think our teachers are doing a phenomenal job with hybrid. There's just certain things that we can't control in this environment, and it's definitely affecting our kids socially, emotionally.
One of the things that we were very excited about, and again, this survey is still open. I believe, Ms. Brown, we opened it up last week, but we have not closed it yet. Is that correct?
The three to five opened two weeks ago, and then we just opened six to 12 this week.
Okay.
This past week.
One of the things that we are excited to see is, under supportive relationships, we're seeing three to five, 88% feeling that they have someone to whom they can go in the school setting to help them with whatever may be challenging them at the time. And then in the six through 12, we have an 85% positive return in terms of students feeling that they do have someone to whom they can go. We'd like to see that increase, but we're feeling that that's pretty good in a hybrid setting. And we're hoping that obviously that increases as we move into more of a full in-person type of situation, as well as dealing with some of the things that just come along with distance learning, as Ms. Brown said, that we'll be able to increase in terms of helping students deal with challenging feelings and helping them have or learn how to start to regulate their emotions.
Is it the students that are filling these surveys out?
Yes.
And how are they getting the six through 12 and the younger kids? How are they getting this? Like the younger kids, or is it coming into the household and then, or they're doing it all on their own?
No, it's online.
And they get it as part of their emails or, because like I, as a parent, I have not seen this.
Okay.
And my daughter might have just said it, taken, okay, no biggie. But I'm just curious, how do parents know this is happening?
So yes, I sent out an information about the survey to all the parents. Sorry.
No, no, thank you. You can send it out.
At the older grades too?
Yes. And actually, did vet a few questions from parents who wanted to know a little bit more about where, how that was designed and how it was vetted. And then in the schools, the way that we try to get response rates up is that students do it with their classes and their, with their teacher in their classes. So at the middle school, be during their advisory, at the high school and Spartan Block, and then in the elementary schools with their teachers. And then the K to two students, there's not a survey that's developmentally appropriate for them. So it's teacher perception surveys. So their teachers actually fill out surveys to give information about how kids are doing that way.
Portals, or is it through just a regular email that goes out with the contact emails for parents?
So the email goes directly to the student, and it's personalized. They have a special code. So each student gets their own survey.
All right. But it's just for the kids. It doesn't go, because I'm only asking because I didn't get an email that this was a thing. So if I didn't get an email, and I trust, it's not a lack of trust or anything like that. I'm just, as a parent, I like to know what the kids are being surveyed on. If it's something above and beyond the everyday school.
Of course. That is strange because I did hear from some high school parents. So I'll have to check and make sure you're all set on Blackboard Connect.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, I thought maybe it was plus portals. I just use my daughter to grab her phone and I go on her plus portals. I don't, I don't like go on it, but I'll check. Kind of got on my spam. I'm just curious. So, but thank you.
The communication from, and use all three. So Blackboard Connect is district-wide. And it should be updated each week from Administrators Plus, which is our student information system, because we have those two software packages talking to each other. However, we could possibly send a note through the school plus portals on the secondary level as well, and then through Bloom. So we cover all three.
And it could be sitting in my spam file, for all I know, but I'm just curious. All right.
We want to make sure parents are aware of this, especially if we're reporting out on it. Sure.
So reflecting all of this data, which is really great information, what are our next steps? How are we addressing this in schools to help distinguish wherever we are? Like for the challenging field, maybe another?
Things that we're doing, and you actually have seen people from the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, that group has gone from helping our steering committee, our Diversity and Equity Steering Committee, to helping our MTSS teams start to utilize this type of student information better and in a more proactive stance. Certainly, the survey is a little bit more reactive. However, we have Panorama pulling data from our student information system on a daily basis, which means it's getting attendance information, it's getting grade information, it's getting disciplinary information. And what it's doing is it's providing for the first time an easy platform for a building team to look and say, or even before that meeting, maybe a counselor, to look and start to review different bits of information and hopefully, in a proactive way, highlight, hey, you know, we may want to talk about this student because it seems like some things are lining up where it could become challenging and provide some support. The goal is to provide that support before it becomes too challenging. But this year, I think it's a little bit more of the reactive while we build our skills to utilize this on a daily and weekly basis.
However, we do look at the information, and that's one of the things we're doing with the teams, is training folks how to look at trends so that we can make, you know, systemic changes and remove any barriers. So if we're noticing a lot of things with students, then we can tweak how we do things in general.
I would imagine you do that in some regard with the structures that are in place such as, sorry, I thought you were waving. With structures in place, like the Spartan Block that you mentioned, Heather, with advisory and with morning meetings at the elementary school, that if those trends are established, then those conversations can be had with leadership teams to potentially say during morning meeting in our elementary school, or during the Spartan Block, we want to adjust the topics to ensure that they're reflective of the results of what our students are telling us they need. So at least then if we have time data and we have support systems built into our schedules, that those two can then match up. And then to Antonella's point, we're actualizing what the data is telling us by putting those types of plans in place.
Exactly.
Ms. Brown, if you have anything else you wanted to add to the surveys?
I mean, you also mentioned that we do look at, we have a dashboard where we can really pinpoint students who have reported a lot of challenging feelings, for example, or lack of positive feelings. And so we're able to pinpoint that too and reach out to families if students need extra supports. So, you know, this is important information for us in many areas.
And I guess for that point, now that you mentioned bringing that information to families, is there like a threshold that we're considering as a district, if the child or a student is demonstrating certain tendencies on a survey such as this, that the counselors are then kind of charged with making contact with the family to ensure that the results of the survey are at least being communicated? So if the family isn't aware, then at least the school is kind of doing their due diligence by ensuring that based on the survey, we're reaching out to the family to say, hey, is everything okay? This is what the survey has demonstrated to us on the school side.
That's exactly what we're asking school-based MTSS teams to do. And the nice thing about the dashboard is it's color-coded. So it just, there's no way to miss a student who has reported these low feelings. And in fact, it's very conservative. So sometimes it will mark some, a kid, for example, red, and you'll look, and it's just one area that they're struggling with. But that's good because it makes us aware and alerts us to students who are in need of, perhaps in need of extra supports.
I'm happy you're doing it. I found out that we were able to have done it back in November and December during the height of all of this, but at least. You did do one out?
And yeah, so.
Tell you, Ms. Brown. Anyways, I'm happy you're doing it because I think it's super important because I, from a personal standpoint, I feel that the social, emotional issue is far more serious than the COVID was for kids our age that we're dealing with. So I'm happy with it. You're doing it.
And I think that's actually a good segue back into the planning. One of the things that I know all of you have heard from our health advisory group is that over the course of the fall and into the winter, one, we learned much more about how COVID is transmitted, you know, what we can be thinking about in terms of our cleaning and disinfecting and so forth. But we also heard more of our pediatricians, and certainly Dr. Clark was one of the pediatricians, who started to see that the social, emotional challenges may be far outweigh, just as you were saying, some of the other things that we were taking into account as we started the school year. It doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to stop in terms of our protective and mitigating strategies. It just means that we've known all along, especially when you're in a hybrid or even a fully remote, even more so, that we need to have more connections with students, you know, not only in the classroom, but outside the classroom, and make sure that they're feeling like they're heard, they have a place that they can go to problem solve and so forth. And so with that said, obviously, we're looking at all this information, hearing what our health advisory is saying, and certainly hearing what the commissioner has said with now his really new authority, telling us what is going to count for structured learning time. We are planning, you know, with a vote of the committee, to be prepared to bring our elementary students in for April 5th. One of the things that that will mean is that we are going to have to look at transportation and start to open that up. DESI did provide some additional guidance around transportation. Basically, the big, they did, that would be nice if they could get us buses. The big change there is that they've removed the capacity. So what that means is that we are able to start to look at scheduling students on buses at similar levels. I think we're going to go slowly, but similar levels to, say, years past. So we are going to start looking at and reaching out to families regarding transportation and see, what I think families need to know, and we certainly will continue to say this in any other messaging from tonight forward, is that it could mean that you are doubling up, not necessarily with a sibling, but doubling up with another student who's going to the school. All students and all staff on the bus will continue to be masked, and they will have the windows open. That's part of the guidance is that windows need to be open. So at least in March, while you still have some up and down temperatures, although at the end of this week, we should be in the 60s, which is kind of nice. You know, people should dress accordingly, knowing that their ride to school, you're going to have windows open. But that is something that we're starting to look at, and we will have to not only reach out to families, but we will also have to start rerouting. Because right now, we have a very small number on our buses, especially at the elementary level at the moment. And so we will start that outreach really starting tomorrow.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Part of that guidance is also that those seats, while a child could be sitting next to another child who attends the same school, that's still an assigned seat. That still remains in the SE guidance that, for the purposes of contact tracing, if something was to happen on a bus, it is still an assigned seat so that we're able to do that.
Great point. And that's something that, right now, we have seating charts from the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, who runs our transportation. And as we reroute and give new bus list to them, they will then have to make sure that they go through an assigned seat. And so we're going to, as I said, start slowly, start populating and get some outreach to students who, and families who rode last year, to see if they're interested and start bringing them back hopefully onto transportation.
So we'll have to message that out by next week then. If we're asking families to decide if they're sending their students, I know for certain that there are families that the hurdle is busing. So as we expand busing and open it up to as many families as possible, we're going to have to let them know by the 15th potentially, so that they can decide by the 22nd whether or not they're going to send their students. Is that fair?
So we're going to start with our elementary levels first, and I'll do that this week. And then hopefully, we will get to the secondary probably next week as we start to continue our outreach. We obviously have to prepare if the, well, the date the commissioner has thrown out is April 5th for elementary. If we're looking to then bring our secondary in by April 12th, obviously, yeah, we would have to make sure that they're ready to go. But to your point, yes, we'll get as much information. But to your point, yes, we'll get as much information out so that families can make a decision. What we'd like to do, and you'll get more information from schools as well as probably some type of automated message from me. We'd like the decision, once we can get you all the information to, for your children or your child, that they, by March 22nd, that they either are coming fully every day in person or they are going to finish the school year in a remote, a fully remote instructional model.
Right. And, and we talked about just having that one window of opportunity. So we would ask families that they decide for the rest of the school year by March 22nd, if they'll be coming in again K through five, April 5th, six through 12, April 12th. All of those, we need to know by the 22nd, what each family is going to decide to do. And we'll get more information out about busing. Just to kind of reiterate the parameters around that, the social distancing minimum requirement would then be now three feet as we move to fully in person. However, going through the buildings, Mrs. Trullio, Mr. Smith and myself went through, we, we actually visited all the buildings this past week, measured out desks. We believe will be between four and five feet. Some will be six or more, just on low class size, but certainly minimum, the minimum would be three. Probably see more of that. Again, six feet whenever on mass, lunchtime would be six feet. Mass breaks will be six feet. We are in the process of ordering tents, multiple tents for each school building. Potentially have those up through October, through the fall. We anticipate that we will still be dealing with COVID in the fall. And we talked about buses to improve that or increase that, hopefully provide as, as much opportunity as is needed in the town and we'll know that better by the end of the week. Also, Mr. Smith and I have committed to doing another one of our videos. We're going to visit Mountain View this week. Yeah. So we'll get a video about Mountain View and, Mountain View and how the chairs are actually set up. So we can show students and families what it's actually going to look like with the new setup. We'll visit probably the cafeteria. We talked about looking at Carline a little bit because I know there's some details to that. So maybe Mrs. Trullio might visit as well on Thursday. So look for that as families, probably the end of the week for more information regarding that. And what have I missed?
A comment in regards to resources. And I know you spoke a little bit about the tents and how Pam has already been kind of working on that for the past few weeks, but I know there are some additional purchases that we've talked about potentially acquiring more desks so that we can do this in a way that's actually maintaining that six feet of distance when we're in the cafeterias and the like. So I don't know if you want to add a little bit.
Yes, sir. In our travels around to the, the buildings, what we're looking at is certainly we have set up the hybrid and I think we've been doing quite well with that. But now the buildings will have to set up for a possibly having a full class in person. And so we are looking to purchase some more elementary desks. And also then in the, probably in the elementary cafeterias, we may work with desks as opposed to the tables, which then creates that individual space for everyone who might be eating lunch and will have those spaced accordingly at six feet or more.
With buses and, and I had mentioned it and I, I certainly hope maybe you can work. I think we should really ask parents, if you do not need the busing, don't sign up for it because you think you might want it as a convenience. Sign up for it if you know that you need it for your students to get to school. If you're only going to need mornings, maybe we could try to work something out where maybe if you just pick a spot in the morning, it keeps open a spot in the afternoon for other students, keeps all the kids further apart. I just wanted to, you know, and I know that you'll figure that out as you go because you just do that. But I think that, I think that's something maybe we should ask our parents as they move forward to, if you really don't need the busing, please don't ask for the busing. We would love to take your children next year. But this year, you know, it's just, it's, it's important. If you've got, you know, you, you have a schedule going and it's working well for you. So I won't sign up for busing, I promise.
Going to keep that balance. We want to, we want to expand transportation. We want people to be comfortable with the protective strategies we're employing. And we know that Carline right now in hybrid is large and, you know, it may get larger if people are taking us up on the option of full in-person learning. And so if we can balance that.
Yeah, we'll push out these to help mitigate some of that traffic at the schools and Carline. They certainly will increase probably. So we want to keep those running smoothly. Other questions or thoughts?
Well, that we had briefly discussed our thoughts about what might happen if we did go full, full toward the end of this year at our last meeting. And that we were going to be discussing the April opening on our own without Commissioner Riley dictating what it is that we have to do in our town. And I just want people to know that because from a personal level, I'm not happy with how our state has taken care of this. I'm proud of what we as a school system have done. I know we have frustrated some parents. I know some feel we were too cautious. I know some feel we were too cavalier. I'm proud of what everybody has done on behalf of our school system. I really am. This is not easy. And I've heard comments lately on social media and I'm not happy with what I'm hearing because when you sit in this spot and you're making decisions for other people's children, you're making it for the whole community with input from the community and, and from the, the medical experts and whatever the World Health Organization says today, or the CDC says tomorrow, or the state of Massachusetts tells us to do. And everybody's telling us something different. So I'm proud of what we've done. I personally delay world going to be opening back up. I, from day one, I kind of wish we could have done that, but you don't know, we're scared and we err on caution. So I'm just throwing that out there for the world. That's how I feel. I'm proud of what we've done.
Yeah. No, well said, Beth. I appreciate that. And I think, I think we can all agree that COVID is here with us for the remainder of the school year. So it's time for another course of action. Vaccinations are starting to become more prevalent nationwide, close to 10%, which is great. Our most vulnerable vaccinated first. Fortunately, credit to the President of the United States for prioritizing the educational staff for vaccinations this month. And that really will ease some worries that, that our staff would have. So we're very appreciative for, for the president and the, the governor Massachusetts as well to follow suit with that. So looking for vaccination for our teachers. But with COVID here through the end of the year, yeah, it's, it's time to make a, another move, I feel, to get more students in person. We will continue to prioritize those that are home and fully remote. Prioritize their education and do the best I'm sure the staff can do for them. But also get more students in the building and continue to follow safety protocol to keep students safe, keep staff safe. So, and I think the spring also provides an opportunity for the windows to be open, better ventilation, getting outside into those tents, bringing class out into the field, eating lunch outside. You know, we've got a lot more options to create more social distancing for that too. So.
Moving in the right direction. I mean, we've seen this for a while now. The numbers have gone down. Everybody anticipated they were going to spike during the holidays. That was true. But now we're moving in the right direction. With the warm weather coming, I think the numbers will continue to go down. I think unfortunately, I'm going to say that, yeah, we're going to deal with COVID for the rest of this year, but I think it's going to be there going forward. I think we're going to have to, some of the stuff that we've learned, social distancing, personal hygiene, things like that, they're here to stay. You got to be careful. Okay, this is serious. The variants, we don't know how bad that's going to turn. They seem that the vaccines seem to be, you know, it's all going in the right direction. I agree with everything that's said. It's time to bring them back. Let's see what it looks like.
Yeah. What about the, you know, we're doing this a little bit, you know, we always have the opportunity as a local community to make decisions that we feel best for the town, the students, the staff. So we see spikes that we don't anticipate. Certainly, we take all the medical information into consideration of the safety for, again, the staff and the students. So.
Think about the community as a whole. Education is definitely something that we continue to see being prioritized by families and our community in general. If not, I don't think we would have been hearing such positive comments coming from Kelly this afternoon to say families are, are on board with this. They are communicating directly with the schools in relation to if testing is occurring, what is occurring and why. And that's really helping us to be able to, for lack of a better phrase, stop the spread. It's, it's helping us to be able to really mitigate in a way that we probably wouldn't be able to if we didn't have such support from the families and the community as a whole. So I commend families for being so forthright and, and coming out and talking and having discussions with the school community so that we're able to continue to bring more kids back in a way that's safe for teachers and in a way that's safe for students. I just think that that's really important, that we maintain those open lines of communication and that they are truly helping as Kelly spoke to this afternoon or this evening, that, that line of communication is, is paramount in terms of being able to keep this momentum going forward. Is there just, and I don't know if, if, what the policy is on this, but are there procedures in place that as educators get vaccinated, that that is also communicated back to the district? So we have rates of vaccinations and then that can help us or no?
Educators are not, not mandated. They get vaccinated. We certainly have asked people for testing, COVID testing. I suppose voluntarily, we could ask, you know, if they're getting vaccinated, we could, they wanted to share that with us.
Thinking about how, what we're noticing about the spread and how it hasn't, if we notice anything further potentially based on vaccinations occurring directly within our district. And I get that it would have to be voluntary, but I just wasn't sure if that was something that we should consider.
I think we have a, a large number of staff that will, are interested and are readily trying to book appointments. So, I mean, if that's something that on a voluntary basis, they're willing to share with us, if they, you know, we certainly can look into that.
Like they're being, you know what I mean? Well, if I don't share it, they're going to wonder why I didn't share it, that kind of thing. I, I think it's a, I think we can expect they're going to mostly do it, which is good.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, honestly, we, you know, there, there is such a thing as vaccine hesitation, but it's our way out of this. You know, with the scientists, doctors are telling us that the way out of this whole mess is through vaccination. So you know, we, we kind of make our decisions for ourselves, but large group of us have to do that. So.
Getting an appointment isn't the best out there, but you got to be diligent. You got to stay at it. If you're convinced, if you're committed to getting the vaccine, you've just got to stay with the process, you know? It, it's frustrating. It's difficult. Yeah, but you get there. And I think as more vaccines become available, that, that will be less, a less daunting task. That, yeah.
Adds by necessarily windows to that.
Right.
Okay. Excellent discussion. Anything else anybody wants to ask or talk about?
I do think that's going to be a very big component of families' decision because if we're asking for March 22nd for families to say we're in for full in-person or we're going to remain remote. I think that there's a lot of questions that we can anticipate, like is busing going to happen to after-school programs? Are there going to be fees associated with busing this year? So I think the more comprehensive of a message we can send out in relation to transportation, the better informed our families will be when they have, when they're asked to make a decision on March 22nd.
Well, and I, I would say we're going to, as we are now, not, we're not charging fees. Yeah.
Is basically what we have to do is start routing and anticipated increase and then have our families verify that they are coming.
Can we do all that in a week?
I hope so.
It doesn't matter how far away they go.
We're trying to get to that point currently. So what we offer now is two miles plus. We offer busing to anyone who lives two miles plus. K through 12 already. We're hoping to open it up potentially to anyone, but if not able to fit anyone, then perhaps a closer mile marker, maybe it's a mile or not. But I think we might get close to everyone depending on how many are communicating, you know, talking.
Start with elementary because I think that's where we seem to be struggling right now. And then move it to secondary.
We'll convey that by next week. We're going to do that so that folks have enough time. Okay. All right. So on the table then it would be to, to change our learning model from the four cohorts with the hybrid AMV to just an either fully in-person or fully remote elementary school starting April 5th would be their first date and that would be the three schools, Mountain View, Maple Shade and Meadowbrook. And then April 12th for Burchland students and high school students. We need to know from families by the 22nd of March, what they're choosing for their students. And also if they'll be looking for busing at that, that point too. Anything else that I missed? Okay. So I would entertain a motion to that effect if anybody would like to make such a thing.
So moved.
Yeah.
Motion made by Bill to.
Effective, effective April 5th.
April 2nd for the.
For elementary, April 12th.
12th for secondary.
Secondary.
To change the only offer either fully remote or fully in-person. Okay. Motion's been made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. So we will continue our planning as we've been doing throughout the year. We will get more information out of the families as we get closer, but if families can start to think about what they want to do for their individual students. Right now, the percentage of students in the secondary level that are in-person is about 50%. But we anticipate that that might increase. In the elementary schools, it varies between 60 to 80% that are in-person already. So folks, just kind of a general idea what the classroom might look like. So if you're in an elementary school and 80% of your classmates are coming in, say there's 20 kids in the class, then, then, then you can anticipate about 16. That's going to vary between classes, but that's how we look at it. Okay. So as we're doing the math for that, we will plan for that. Okay. Everybody's good?
Our next meeting, we'll be able to hear probably maybe a little bit more from the schools in terms of where they are in the planning process in relation to this, two weeks.
We won't know exactly everyone's, that'll be the.
That's the cutoff date. Yeah.
We won't know the finalized number, but we'll be close. So yeah, we'll look at the leadership team here to talk about that. And as I said, we'll do that video this week. And we'll get that out on the app. So at least the younger students and the older ones can imprint from it. We can show the younger students what it might look like in families so they can make their decision.
Just because I think that was one of the other family, one of the other families commented on just ensuring that there is that robust program for students who are remaining fully remote. So ensuring that as we start to forward plan, we're addressing that through the inclusion of a leadership team.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Excellent discussion. I appreciate it all. And Beth, as you said, you know, all the work and effort that we, we've gone through, certainly I acknowledge it for all of you.
And I know Greg, you've been tirelessly. I know Sarah's put a lot of extra time in as, as, you know, it's, it's ridiculous the amount of time I know that you personally have put in and I appreciate it because I don't know, I, I can't, you know, I'd never be at work.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a whole group effort, you know, certainly we rely on Gordon, you all know that. He's, he's our ace. And Pam as well and Kathy in the office and the whole staff. I mean, we ask, again, we're, let's acknowledge that we're asking our whole staff to now shift the whole other model of learning. We've asked them to do that once. They've been successful. We're going to ask them to, you know, carry that weight again. But hopefully with a little bit of time, a couple of weeks to plan and any support that we can give them, you know.
I know and they really have. And it, I get it because you're, you're there trying to protect the kids and keep the kids home, but you're trying to protect your staff too, because some of them are at that age range where and now they're coming back into it full and even still, they're not all going to be necessarily vaccinated at that point because I still think it's taking too long. But, but you know what I'm saying? It, it just, so yeah, I appreciate everything they've done because I know you, you go into work every day wondering.
Yeah.
For, you know, our leadership team, the, the work that they've done in trying to help staff move through and make these changes because it's, there's a lot of planning to it.
But to our, again, credit, we allowed the time to plan, which has provided for them to be successful. And I think by deliberately, you know, staying remote as long as we did, again, Beth, as we spoke about, giving the staff some time to plan for the transition to hybrid and trying to give them as much time as we can this time around. Hopefully that gives them some room to move.
Sure. We're, we're not sure. None of us are right now in terms of what the fall is going to bring. So by being able to capitalize on the remaining few months of this academic year, if nothing else, we're setting our, our students and our, our faculties up to be even more successful, potentially at the next launch of the academic year, considering we don't necessarily know what that's going to look like.
No, we don't. Okay. Excellent discussion. Thank you all so very much. Oh yeah. Heather, thanks. Appreciate it.
No problem.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, with that, um, we are gonna move on to our next item of business. We have the FY twenty-two budget development.
Your package, you have a similar budget sheet to the one that you saw um at our last meeting, and we know as we start to break down this year, and we've had, uh, should we break down what it looks like for next year? And we've had some discussion with the town council, but then also um some informal discussions with town manager and town finance director. We're trying to give them a look at um what level services uh would look like to bring our programming back, the successful programming back, uh as well as all staff. Um, and so we know that that's um possibly uh around a three point one percent increase, which is larger than some of the increases we've seen over the last um four or five years. Uh, and so so that's something that um we wanna discuss with them and impress upon them how and why we think that will be successful to to move in um to a level services budget. Because you remember it last year, uh in order to make sure that uh we were helping the town with with reductions, um we did uh reduce positions. You know, we had a high school assistant principal, a high school instructional technology specialist, a foreign language teacher at at Birchland Park Middle School, a literacy support teacher, and then a shared um literacy academic coach at Maple Shade and Mountain View. Uh, and these are, these are positions that um we feel not only had value, but will still be valuable moving forward. But we know that um there's, there's gonna be a challenge uh next year. We're still unsure as to what budgets are gonna look like, whether it be on the state level, on the municipal level. And certainly, depending on what the municipal budget looks like uh at the school or the department level. So as we've had some discussions, and I I know um Mrs. Blair probably can add to this, uh as we have developed and put together some projections, we're looking at about a three point one percent increase. We also know, and based on some of the data that uh we gave in that previous discussion, that we feel we really have to look at both and balance both the social, emotional, support and um opportunity for growth along with the academic support and opportunity for growth. So we're really kind of looking at um if we were to add positions, having an adjustment counselor at um the three to five level, you know, at the Maple Shade and Mountain View level, because right now we have counselors there, but the other buildings also have that adjustment counselor piece. And that's a different type of counselor from a guidance counselor. An adjustment counselor is looking at um and has further training in helping students overcome different social and emotional, emotional challenges as they grow and mature. We also, um, as you know, had looked at um a, an additional preschool teacher at Meadowbrook, uh adding back the foreign language teacher at Birchland and becoming creative at the high school with um having the assistant principal um who would then be looking at overseeing all assessment at the high school as well as um coordinating all the use of educational software. So those are some creative ideas that um we had discussed with the leadership team. Uh, and at least wanted to make sure that uh we had the discussion with all of you, not only in the last meeting, but this meeting. Mrs. Blair, I don't know if there's other points that um you might wanna add.
I just want to remind everyone that behind the scenes, there's lots of work that happens. Obviously, we have lots of um different bargaining units and each of those, you know, we have contractual obligations that need to be looked at and um and on the um expense side of the budget, we have lots of contracted services that then need to be analyzed to make sure that um, you know, we're projecting appropriate increases for those and and analyzing um, you know, the the needs for the district. And so lots of time, energy, and discussions happen um with the leadership team before this all comes forward to to you, the school committee, to help um you know, make these decisions to then bring it forward to the town council. I would like to add that it's not uncommon at all for a school district, which is always half of a town or or a city's budget, to need three to four percent to maintain level services. That is not a ridiculous ask by any means. So um you know, it's it's a large number, but again, we are half of the the town's budget and three percent um I think is doable, and I'm hoping that we'd be able to get that. Um, we do have some grants. We've talked about um the federal government, as well as the state government, has come through with some uh CARES Act um funding and um state uh coronavirus prevention fund uh funds that that have helped us, you know, get through all of this um challenging times with the PPE and and just additional um staffing that we've needed to to just kind of get through. I will say we have um another large grant that um is just coming through now. We haven't actually applied for it yet, because that goes through until September of two thousand twenty-three. Obviously, the federal government realizes that um we've got some challenging times behind us, but we don't really know what's gonna happen in this next year. So you know, I I feel confident and 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 good abouts about, you know, the next year, that maybe we can get some of the these um adjustment counts or contracted services to help with the social, emotional. Um, but again, we just don't know what's gonna happen this next year. So I I think we have to be very careful um with that and and analyze that and continue these discussions.
Pam, you brought up a really good point. As we talk about social, emotional needs of the district, uh if we're not able to ask for it or fund it, at least through the town budget, we do have the potential through some of the um COVID relief grant funds to fund outside services that would potentially address some of our needs. Uh, you know, of course, it would not be a long-term remedy, but potentially for next year at least, to use some of those funds to meet the needs of our students, uh, you know, as soon as we can, uh, because we do realize that the impact this is having on all of them. Um, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Pam. Uh, also, can you address the, so if we talk about three point one percent for level services, we know about the um bargaining units. We're all familiar with the percentage increases, but is it, is it a lot of contractual obligations in terms of outside services that's that's driving that three point one percent?
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on you. I was just gonna say that, you know, um, and again, this is absolutely normal from every city and town or with the school department, a good seventy to eighty percent of our budget is salaries, because that's what we're doing. We're educating the child, right? So it makes sense that that's where. Um, so we are um in negotiations with Unit A. That's our teachers this year. Um, so there is a placeholder in there, a safe placeholder, you know, um but certainly there's always some question marks there. Um, so when I talk about on the expense side of the budget there, special ed is is a large, um, you know, ticket item. There are um lots of out-of-district tuitions and transportation is one of those. Um, you know, there's a price tag to all of that. So it ends up that, you know, um, like I said, it it's close to eighty percent, um maybe seventy-eight percent of our budget is on the salary side, and so it is the contractual obligations.
Questions from the committee discussion?
Town has always been very good with the money that we need, and and I know that Ms. Blair had mentioned, you know, the money that we've gotten for COVID relief and all of that, and that's great, but that's just helping us to like hold our own. I think about our food service program, although they're feeding the children for free this year, it's it's costed that program for us. That money has to come out of somewhere. So yes, this is nice, and but even the money that we'll be getting next year, I I hope that we don't have to depend on that just to make our our ends meet. That's above and beyond. That's for getting those tents we might get through October or whatever downfall we have. And we might have to even be putting in to catch kids up to where they have to go. We might need that money for whatever, whatever curriculum's out there to get our kids to where they need to do. And so I really do believe that our town always is there for us. They always do what's best for us. But when we talk about the COVID money, it's exactly it. It's like the COVID money. It's like to help us fix what just happened. Yeah, yeah.
It's, it'll get us through maybe a year. But after that, we're gonna have to turn around and figure it out. I mean, we've got to get the positions back, but we have to work slowly because there is still a lot of unknowns when it comes to the budget. You know, if we can get level services, all right, it's a step, because we're not going backwards like we did this year. So we just have to do it permanently, but not lose sight of the of what we need.
I just wanted to remind everyone that um with federal grants, if we do pay any salaries under the grant, anytime there's we we need to put aside nine percent for um retirement funds. It's just the way the rule is. So I just would like to remind everybody about that. Um, you know, the town, I I know I said this on one of our other meetings, and we've all talked about it. They were so supportive with our one-to-one far before this whole COVID happened, and we're so thankful that we partnered together and that they did support us. And I'm truly cautiously optimistic that, again, they're gonna support us as much as they can, um realizing that we always are very conservative. We, this is not a wish list. We don't bring forward that. The school, uh, the leadership team has already done all their due diligence behind the scenes before we even bring this forward to the school committee. And I'm, you know, personally very proud of the team that we have. And and again, I'm just really optimistic that um that we're gonna get the level services that we need.
And I was just gonna add, I think that this budgetary season and and last budgetary season, season, I think has been done so in the spirit of collaboration, like Beth just brought up, like we've worked on the school side of things to help support food services. When we needed to, we worked on the town side of things to ensure that we brought any funds back to the town that we could, based on some of these additional funds that were coming specifically earmarked for the schools. So I think that that spirit of collaboration is wonderful and that we recognize that as an entire community and all the different departments, we need to ensure that we're providing for our students and we're providing for other functions of the town to go on as intended based on all the budgetary constraints that each department is potentially facing. But I do go back to the fact that level services keeps us at the status quo. And while that is three, three percent, it's still not allowing our schools as a whole to accelerate or to do anything different or beyond if that's tied to any kind of funding. And I think that that's important, that as we continue to to talk to the town councils, we continue to engage the town manager and the department head, that level services just allows for that, in that if we want to continue to be a leader in education, and if we want our students to continually have the best possible services and our educators to have, what they need to actualize those things, that while three percent is a large number, all it does is maintain us. And if we want more or we want better, then we need to have the money and the positions by which to do so. And I get that this year is hard, and I'm thankful for Pam, for her creativity in terms of thinking about ways that we might be able to utilize COVID relief funds, but that's temporary, and we need to really work alongside of the town council, alongside of the town manager to ensure that what is not a wish list, but what is really like necessary to keep us moving forward as a community, it, those funds are there so that we can do what's best for kids and teachers.
And I believe we have the opportunity to educate the town council, the town manager, the financial oversight committee of all of these facts, because I agree level services is level services. It does not promote growth. Any growth that we would have have would have to take place inside of our budget, not necessarily the right way to go, given all of the unknowns that are still out there. That's why I don't want to lose sight of these positions that are on this sheet. It's all, it's not a wish list. It is something that we need, but.
So just to address those, Bill, I think appropriately, um, Maple Shade, Mountain View, shared adjustment counselor. So we may be able to address some of that with the grant funding through contracted services and and probably in all realist, uh, to be reasonable or realistic, it may be difficult to find any adjustment counselors looking for a job. So I think the sooner that we um go out for contracted services, the more likely we'll be able to secure them for our students. So I think that's good. The uh Meadowbrook preschool teacher, so what we're finding is that at the beginning of the school year, we have our peer models and the uh ratios are appropriate, but as we go through the school year, we we have uh more students uh with IEPs. Early intervention, thank you. Um, and then they outnumber our peers, so that they wanted to add another uh classroom to provide more uh even numbers. But again, we we may have to wait for that.
We've actually been able to, like, I think that's what we need this at some point. We really do, yeah.
We don't have our peer partners. It's substantially separate program, basically. Um, but in years past, we we've always had the peer partners.
The, the foreign language teacher, that would be for Birchland Park. Currently, two foreign language teachers at Birchland, so this would be a third to potentially provide foreign language.
Right, bring them back to the number that they had.
To bring back what we lost, actually, in this good budget cycle. So, and then the high school assistant principal, uh uh, you know, certainly that was a loss in last year's budgets, and you know.
And this is actually a creative way of looking at that, because the high school lost two positions.
Right.
Um, and this assistant principal could oversee um all assessment as well as uh be the coordinator for the educational software that we're using. We we seem to be using more and more. And then certainly, if that's the the person's job, they could assist as, say, the instructional technology specialist
Right.
was doing last year, maybe not to the degree that um an instructional technology specialist can assist, but um you know, the hope is you, we get some talented people who can do that.
Good creativity. So I think as part of our discussion going forward, if we do decide to submit a proposed budget to the town manager for her to pass along to the town council at that three point one percent uh increase uh contractually, then certainly worth discussing in our, in our collaboration with the council and the manager, these other positions, plus the ones that we came up with. They're not exclusively in here. We keep that conversation going to talk about the future, to talk about, all right, this year might be different. Local receipts are down. There's uncertainty on the federal government uh and state government in terms of funding. So we can, we can uh keep it a little tight this year, but we we have plans for this community. We want to get, keep, keep moving forward and not stay stagnant. So uh next year, we'll look to to regroup on that.
My point, I don't want to lose sight of any of these positions. It's worth, it's worth the discussion.
And that level services reflects the services that we put into place last year, which includes the reduction in these staff numbers.
Right.
So really, if we were to go back the year prior, it wouldn't necessarily be level services, because those positions would have been included.
Right.
So in our work to collaborate, which I'm not saying was the wrong work, it's the right work, but to collaborate for the sake of the whole town, like we did move to move those positions out. But as we move forward, it's those positions would have been included in level services for this year as well.
So I think in our submission, uh, Mr. Smith, then we should probably prepare a narrative to along this discussion. Um, where we were, you know, the positions that that we did agree to to cut last year, what our understanding of this year, potentially the level services, however, we have ideas on where we want to be. So if we can all start that conversation or keep that going, um, that would be productive.
So of the timeline of March fifteenth for submittal of the draft.
They would like to have um a draft for March fifteenth, so that the town manager can take a look at what the whole budget possibly would look like. Uh, and I believe she has to deliver a draft budget by April first.
It's on the agenda for the twenty-third of March. So the fifteenth, I think, would work, uh, in terms of just compiling it to give to the council.
Sure.
And we did have some progress on the uh charter review. I don't know if anybody was keeping up in the weeds on this, but uh, yeah, the charter review, there was a proposed change in one of the uh budget proposal submissions. Currently, our budget goes directly to the town council as approved by this committee through the town manager who puts them together and sends them along. Uh, that will continue, fortunately. Uh, I I'm thankful for the deliberation of the um charter commission uh to really vet that, and certainly appreciate Mr. Smith going to the attorney general and others that contributed to that discussion, but uh we'll continue on with that. So we look to send it to the town manager. Uh, if we are able to come to some consensus tonight by the fifteenth, and we look to her to present it on the twenty-third as a proposed budget from the school committee. I'm sure more uh discussion will ensue from there. Yeah. Okay, good. Yeah.
Have tremendous support at each one of our schools through the PTOs, and that the funds that come into the buildings based on the involvement of the PTOs and the fundraising efforts of those um groups, ELEAF, the amount of money that has contributed to our schools to help when we are in a situation such as this, where we're gonna be able to seek level services only, that the influx of funds that we, people rise to the occasion, whether it's the ELEAF group or whether it's the PTOs, they they keep um, the community has been steadfast in keeping the funds where they belong, which is with kids and I and teachers. And I think that that's really important, and that we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge those other community organizations within town that keep education at the forefront. I know Beth has served on that committee in Antonella in terms of ELEAF, and just the PTOs have been tremendous throughout.
Okay, another excellent discussion on the evening. If the committee is so inclined, I would entertain a motion for the superintendent to uh compile to compile a budget that would include a 3.1% increase, uh, which would reflect level services for FY '22 with the narrative similar to as we discussed this evening.
Yep. Including the other four positions.
Yep.
So I move to accept in, um, the, I move to ask Mr. Smith to compile a budget to submit to the town manager at a 3.1%, which is level services for the FY '22 budget.
Including the four positions.
Including the four positions, uh, which were.
In an area.
In an area, okay.
Okay, motion made by Beth. Second by Antonella. Antonella's question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Excellent, thank you. Stay tuned for further discussion on that. Okay, we have East Summit High School Program of Studies, new course proposal, 5.1.4.
I think we have Mr. Page in our audience and maybe Ms. Donardo as well.
All right. Yay, I'm here.
There she is.
Hi, everybody.
How we doing, guys?
There we are, okay, we have both.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Page and Ms. Donardo, can you walk us through the change to the program of studies and, and give us a, just some description of the new course that we're looking to add?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty basic going into this year. We only have one new course that we're looking to offer. This is a course that would be taught by our child nursery management and child development teacher, Ms. Juanita Poole. So this is a course that is open to all, all students in grades 11 to 12 with the recommendation of the child development teacher, Jizma's Poole. The careers in education course is offered to juniors and seniors who are interested in a career in education and have successfully completed child development and/or child nursery management. So in this course, the students will examine careers, uh, working with children, including qualifications, responsibilities, expectations, certifications for teachers and related staff. Students in the course are going to participate in externships in early childhood, elementary, middle school, high school, and/or special education settings under the guidance of a cooperating practitioner. So that's in conjunction with the, the teacher of the program. The structured combination, the classroom-based education and practical work, work experience provides students with the fundamental practices necessary to take the first steps on the path to becoming an accomplished professional in the field of education. So really what we're trying to do here is create some real world experience with our, our students in the educational field. We feel like between our five schools, our kids can really have a great experience and opportunity to, you know, learn hands-on what, what it takes to be an educator.
Play to actually go out to the schools, Frank, you're saying?
Yeah, so the idea would be each week, there'd probably be about three days that they would be in the class, uh, learning the pedagogy and the foundations of what it means to be a teacher. And then, and then two days a week, they would push out to, let's say, Meadowbrook, Maple Shade, Mountain View, Burson Park, uh, different, different programs at the high school, um, and get that real world experience. So, uh, similar to how in the little big kids nursery school, those kids, they have the, um, pedagogy days on Mondays and Fridays and they push into the child nursery program. On Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it would be a similar experience where they could push into, let's say, a first grade classroom, um, you know, a middle school classroom and assist that teacher.
That's great. I know my oldest loved, uh, early childhood with Mrs. Poole, so I think she might have some interest in this class as well. So I, I appreciate you putting that together.
Cool. And the idea here was just to kind of take that program and bring it to that next level, you know, give kids more experiences with, um, working in education.
Would there be consultation with local colleges that do offer, um, courses and educations that we're ensuring that what we're providing in terms of a curriculum relative to, to training future teachers is in alignment with what local colleges are, are touting as best practices?
Uh, so Ms. Poole, um, was actually a, a practicum supervisor for Westfield State. So she has that experience in, uh, making sure that, you know, the kids do have that, that type of background. Uh, our hope was potentially if this program takes off and it does what we want it to do, uh, potentially even reach out to, um, schools like Bay Path and, uh, see if we could even maybe attach some college credits to it like, uh, like we do with our dual enrollment program.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking about, given our close partnership with them that's been developed over the past, um, few years, that that might be a great, um, community partner in terms of ensuring that this is really setting students up to meet with success if they choose to go that route on, on getting into the, the college that they're choosing.
We're, we're thinking the same way.
I'm really happy to see this because as you know, a couple of years ago, they were thinking of getting rid of the program altogether, which I thought was horrifying. And we have some fantastic teachers who've come out of our school. They've not just been teachers, they've become pediatricians, all from this class. And I think that this is, this is fascinating. That was something new. This is something that you've seen around in the past, like, like in other school systems? Or is it just something that Mrs. Poole just, you know, just knows inherently because of her, uh, her position with, um, teaching new students?
Yeah, I think she, she has a, um, a unique background where, um, obviously she, she's worked with, uh, the nursery program, but also she, she also does have that college experience of working with, um, you know, practicum students and getting them ready for the classroom. So, um, it was kind of like a melding of building off of what we're already doing. Um, looking at some of our externship programs where some of these kids push out to some of our elementary schools already, but now adding that, that pedagogy piece where they're, they're also getting the, um, the foundation of, of how to do the job and not just, you know, um, go get the experience.
That's great. I think we might all work with MSBA and, and thinking about ways that, um, high schools can be designed to be innovative and think about what types of courses they're offering to ensure that we are cutting edge and we are innovative. And I think of, of course, design such as this being added to a program of studies substantiates our work, um, alongside of the MSBA to create, um, hopefully that facility that is, that allows for, for programs of studies such as this.
There you go.
There we go.
See, we're on the future.
Is this a full year course or an elective?
Is it a full year course or an elective?
Okay. I asked if it's a full year course or an elective or?
So it will, it would fall under the elective category, but because we will be semester-based going into next year, it'll be a semester course.
And if the students are taking in 11th grade, can they also take it in 12th grade? Like, will it continue or is it the same class?
Um, I think, we, we've kind of talked this out. I think if a kid was looking to have a little bit of a different experience, um, in, in a later year, we could structure it a way where we could get that kid that experience. So let's say, you know, one year they might go to, um, like a kindergarten program, the next year they want to maybe go three to five. We, we could make something like that happen.
Just thinking of that, it triggered another thought. Is there any way, um, we might be able to partner with some of, uh, the colleges and universities where maybe they do that second year, some type of dual enrollment?
Yeah, I think that's, we're, we're hoping to, as, um, after we get our feet under us and get the program into place, potentially reaching out to a place like Bay Path and, uh, in doing that.
Yeah, that would be interesting if we could actually get them college credit. Yeah.
Or even a kind of certificate. Yeah.
Other schools around us, Bay Path, we've partnered with, uh, very closely, but, um, might be interested in doing something like that. If, if we have students successfully taking off in that 11th grade year and then they're looking to do something more in their 12th grade year. Oh, absolutely. This is great. We're happy that, uh, this is coming to us.
Yeah. That's the one change, Frank, to the course of studies.
That's it, nice and easy.
There you go.
Any other questions, concerns, discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the change to, um, program of studies. Addition, yes.
To approve the addition to the program of studies of careers in education, um, as proposed by Mr. Page.
Excellent. Motion made by Beth. Second by Bill. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Frank and Amanda, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you guys so much. It's been so great to see the kids too. They're happy to be back. It's awesome. Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving right along. As we talk about the future, we have a Meadowbrook principal search process to begin.
So we have actually posted this position. We posted it last week and, um, it's, uh, being posted nationally and we're on a couple of different sites. And so, uh, we hope to attract some very good candidates. We also know that we have some very candidate, good candidates within, um, our school systems. So, uh, we're excited to get into this, um, principal search. Similar to searches in the past, we're going to have a committee that, um, starts us off and will screen the applications and then set up the, the first interviews. Uh, we would have our director of curriculum coordinate this first committee. And so you would have the director of curriculum on the committee. Uh, we would like to have two school committee members on that committee as well. Then we look for two administrators, uh, at least one of whom would be an elementary administrator. Uh, we're looking for four Unit A, uh, members on this committee. And so, uh, I'm sure the ELEA will help us with a lottery for anybody who's interested in getting on that. We look for two, um, Unit E or paraprofessionals, uh, at least one support staff. And then we'd work with Meadowbrook's, um, PTO and probably school council to try to, um, put together three, uh, parents who also could join the committee. Uh, and that would be a group that, uh, hopefully can be named this week. And then, uh, we can start working, um, in the weeks to come. Our posting is going to run through March 26th and, um, we hope to then, uh, start to prepare just before that during the week of the 22nd and 29th. And if all goes well, possibly begin interviews on the 5th. Unfortunately, similar to what we talked about at the beginning of our meeting, we know that COVID is still with us. And so a lot of this, um, may be done as it was last year with the high school search, um, remotely or in a virtual setting. Uh, but if all goes well, we will select our finalists that would be moved on to the second, um, committee, uh, during that week, April 19th. And then that second committee would be coordinated by me, the superintendent of schools, uh, and would have the superintendent, assistant superintendent for business, a school committee member on that, and then an ELEA representative as well. Uh, what has worked in the past really well is that, um, we've had learning walks or virtual learning walks after the finalists have interviewed. And actually, um, I was unsure of how the virtual learning walks were going to work last year, um, and they worked incredibly well. So, um, you know, depending on where we are with vaccines and so forth, um, you know, you might be able to get a learning walk in in person.
Can't this person come into our school?
I think double mask will get them in.
I think, yeah. I mean, I think we're there now.
Yeah, as we, as we get there, we're going to be in late April, possibly early May.
Yep.
This, this whole thing will change again.
Double mask and advisor, I think we could do it.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's the, that's the timeline. Uh, we hope to stick to that as closely as possible. Uh, and, um, we're looking for three representatives from the school committee, two to be on that first group and one to be on that second group. Um, and then we'll continue to build the committees as we go forward.
What, uh, what kind of day on both, Gordon? Any, any idea?
Uh, generally, we try to do sort of three o'clock on so that, um, we know that, uh, we're working around work schedules. And so, you know, the earliest, I think we've started groups around three o'clock.
I'm with either of these. I, that April 19th is kind of sort of a vacation week. Um, I know I'm gone like that Thursday, Friday of that week, but I'm fine any other day for, for either or.
More of a deliberation. Hopefully we've done interviews before then and so it's moving finalists on.
I mean, I've got time to look.
I'd be happy to join. I just, I'm a little concerned that I may know some of the candidates, um, just because of my work. Um, so that makes me a little uncomfortable to be sitting on this. I would love to. I just, I would hate to potentially skew anything based on, um, knowing some of the individuals.
Yeah, and I think that's, um, that's a great point and, uh, it's something we should mention and we will mention to all our committee members that that's a point of disclosure. If they know the candidate, then they have to, um, state that and then we'll have to figure a way of whether they continue to participate or not.
Yeah, I have been here. I think I might. I would love to do it though, but, yeah.
And I mean, I'd be happy to think like if we get to the finalist stage and that's not the case, that the candidates aren't known, um, that I'd be willing to do that. But I think, um, especially with the screening piece.
Um, I mean, I can, I can go with the two, so.
The finalist works a little bit better because I've got some meeting things that I might, under, under the, um, interview committee, I've got a couple of meetings that might interfere with that. If, if it doesn't matter to anybody else, um, that works better, but I'm certainly happy to do either. If, if, because I know Bill's got a lot of stuff happening.
Actually, two of them, two of them just ended, so I could fit things in.
All right.
That's why, you know, it's, it's whatever. I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Yeah. I can definitely do, uh, the first part.
Greg, I know you're busy.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I can be the one.
You sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's okay with you guys. All right.
Yeah. You know how Beth can be, right?
I know.
She's tough and that's why we love her. Yeah, that's right. Okay.
I would love to be a part of it. I just don't want to skew the process at all.
It's been a while since I've actually been.
Yeah.
Because we haven't really.
It's a good process. I, yeah.
It's a different process, virtual.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I don't like different.
Yeah.
As, as things loosen up, but I think the learning walks, I, you know, as, as all of you made that point, that's a great point. There's no reason why at that point you can't do a learning walk, mask up, and so that would be good.
Right.
And we'll figure out the other stuff.
The other, the other part, we can see how it all goes.
All right, I'll take a motion to appoint, please.
All right. And it's on it, but yeah.
She's ready.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, to appoint the preschool committee members, Beth, and the Meadowbrook principal.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. We're on our way for that one.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a MCAS update. Here we go.
I think, uh, Ms. Brown's still in the audience.
I am.
Oh, there she is.
I am still here.
Thank you for still being there. Um, so we wanted to update and then, uh, certainly, uh, Ms. Brown can, uh, give you more of the detail, but, um, there's, in this year where we've been in COVID operations, there have been a number of changes, um, to what the state assessment program is going to look like this year. And, and some of it, we had reported on in an earlier meeting where they've reduced the, um, the amount that our students are taking specifically at the, um, younger grades. Uh, and they've added some, um, changes just this past week. Uh, but we did want to remind families that, um, that there's a reason that this is in place. One, it's embedded in law, but it also is helpful for not only our, um, our entire district and at each grade level to see sort of where we are with our students in terms of the learning standards and their growth, but also to help us plan for the future based on some of the things that we see from this. And I don't want to take, um, more of your details, Ms. Brown, that you might, um, say much better than I'm presenting it.
I don't think so. Um, but I did send out a letter to families, um, explaining, um, the points that you were just saying, Mr. Smith, about, um, how we use the MCAS information. In terms of the updates, did you want me to share the updates?
Please.
So, uh, recently, the DSC came out with, um, basically, uh, the sixth to eighth grade is to be determined now. There were some windows and now we're waiting on that. Uh, for the third through fifth grade, they've moved it forward. For the third through fifth grade, they've moved it forward. So now that testing window is between May 10th and June 11th. And I should have taken out this last one. Sorry, the April 27th and May 28th is not accurate, so I'll just do that. And the, nothing has changed in terms of ELA and math for 10th and 11th graders. And also with the science for 10th and 11th graders, there is a competency determination, so they do not have to take the science. The ninth graders, however, do. Half of our students took the biology in February, and the other half will take it in June. So, you know, things are changing week to week, so we just are keeping ourselves on top of it and trying to keep families on top of the new changes as well.
Questions, thoughts on MCAS?
I was just wondering, do you know what they're going to do? The first of all, people know there's two policies that are involved. I know a lot of people.
Right.
I understand. It's terrible that we have to test for kids, you know, everything. But everything that we're testing is good stuff. It is stuff that makes one of the best, you know, states in the country and education. And although I don't think, I think this year is different, and I don't know exactly what they're going to do. I don't think anybody should be accountable to any of the numbers that come out of the MCAS. It's important for us to monitor the status of the year just to help find out where they are. And that said, it also has two policies that are pretty considerable that first gave the score. I was just wondering, Heather, you know, what's happening with the space that we're taking this year?
Abigail Adams and the Coplick certificate. Are they going to be adjusting how those are seen this year? Do they know anything about what's happening with those?
All they've told us is that students continue to qualify based on their MCAS scores.
That's all they got. Okay.
Yeah, they haven't said what would happen if it got waived. And one thing that I've been telling some folks is that it's not even up to the commissioner to change the MCAS. You know, it takes legislative action. And so we just kind of wait and see things move slowly in that realm of the world.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to build up your point. There, it's legislative action, but we also have a, our sitting president is also endorsing that we continue to move forward with testing. So not only is it nationally happening in terms of legislation, but, you know, statewide, we have not seen that, you know, that move happen. And I think it is important to clarify that it's not the commissioner who actually holds that power, nor is it us as a board, that these are decisions that are made at a national and a state level in terms of those decisions being made.
And they've also said that waivers probably will not be granted this year. And that's coming from the federal level. So it's not, to Sarah's point, it's not us, it's not the state. It's coming from the top. If they're going to provide federal dollars, there's some things that we have to do to get them.
And I think that's the thing, that there is good data, not only for school districts and for teachers and for buildings, but there's good data for families to get a sense. We didn't have MCAS in play last year. So in truth, we don't have a statewide metric right now, any kind of data point to let us know how our current sixth graders, or, sorry, our current eighth graders have done since sixth grade. So it does help us when we think about, from a parent perspective, I kind of want to know, like, where my kid is falling, maybe in the places where they're doing really well and the places maybe where they're not doing so well, so I can have an informed conversation with my child teacher to say, based on this, what do you think? What is your professional opinion? How do we either work to kind of stay the course? Or are there things I should be trying to do at home, or what are we going to offer in the schools? So it does offer an additional data point for families to engage in and to look at student progress and to maybe look at some areas of potential concern because we've gone already a full year without this metric in place, so.
And to add on that, sorry.
I'm sorry, what's going to happen to students that they maybe didn't, weren't able to do well on it, and they would have been retaking it, say, last year, and they're maybe a senior this year? How are we going to get them tested? And, I mean, are we in a situation with any of our seniors so they could pass?
Or it's the competency determination is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And so students that were in that retesting mode, they have offered an alternative to that. And so we have to make sure that students are enrolled in a course within that subject area and that they are passing that course. And this year, they would meet that competency determination.
That's all that they have to do.
Right. And we have to then file in a portal, the course that they took, match it up with one of the state numbers. So all of our courses in the program of studies should match up with a certain course within the state guidelines.
And so we're not seeing that any of our kids are going to be left out. This information will get in, they'll pass it prior to graduate, if they pass, they can graduate.
Right now, guidance counselors would be working with students who are in that situation and would be explaining this. And then Mr. Page and I would go in towards the end of the year and file for each of those students.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And that option's available to seniors, but not 11th graders at this point. But 11th graders will be testing in the testing window.
Okay, good. I think there's just some people out there that are concerned about.
Sure, no, it's a great question because this gets confusing, especially as you're dealing with different COVID operational elements.
I do think that the high school is probably the place that if we need to funnel support in terms of what testing looks like and the timelines and ensuring that we're providing our juniors who are now taking it this year when they would have taken it last year with the supports that they need, because that's a tough year to be taking this on while they're probably also thinking about things like AP exams and qualifications and a host SATs and a host of different tests that are coming down on that group in particular. I know families have reached out to us to engage in further discussion around supports that we might be able to put into place for our juniors in particular. And I think that that's something we should probably explore a little bit further to try to see if there's ways that we can not raise MCAS, but be able to support with making it as positive of an experience in light of everything else that our juniors in particular are having to take on.
Okay, good update on MCAS. We'll cut up the speed on that. Good stuff. Thank you, Heather, for the information. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, we're moving right along. We had the ELPS Diversity and Equity Steering Committee in their presentation last week. We're looking to have some school committee involvement with them as they move forward.
So currently, we have Ms. Marvin, Dr..
Chair on that committee, and we feel that it'd probably be a good idea to add another school committee member so that as we start to develop not only action plans off of, say, the equity audit, you know, you have school committee members in the discussion and then also presenting back the whole group.
How often do you?
We, well, prior to last year and this year, we were meeting once a month. We probably would like to get back to at least that, if possible, just to sort of regain the momentum off the presentation that was made. And then that subcommittee that actually did the presentation, I want to say that they were meeting as they built that presentation, maybe two times a month. So there, sometimes there will be subcommittees doing some smaller projects to bring back the whole committee, but generally, once a month. We had been doing 5:00. And good old days, sometimes we even had dinner for everybody.
Right.
Now, will this have a virtual dinner for you?
It's an exciting time because we're at the point to start connecting our MTSS work with the equity work because obviously, it's all connected. So just putting it out there that it's a great committee to be on.
I would say I'd be happy to take it on. I know you look like you're ready to say it to Aunt Nella. I'd be happy to work on it.
Okay.
If that works.
Yeah.
Done. Thank you, Sarah. Good.
Thank you.
Make sure that we get you on the distribution list so we can schedule with all of you. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you all.
Oh, yeah, now we're done. Thanks, Heather. Yeah. Okay, and our final piece of business is 7.4 hour edition, the memorandum of understanding dated March 8, 2021, just a motion to approve as discussed in executive session.
You dated 3/8/21 as discussed in executive session earlier.
Made by Bill. Second by Aunt Nella, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. That carries five to zero. And with that, we have reached the end of our school committee meeting. Excellent work, everyone. Thank you so very much. Jamie and Don, thank you. Yeah.
I know.
A little bit normal. Well.
We're still distancing, but we're.
We're here.
Other office? Oh, my gosh.
Can you believe it's been a year already? We went out about a year ago, so.
Yeah.
Turning back, steering the ship in the right direction. So I think we all, for all of you, work.
And with that.
I know.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Bill. Second by Beth. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Good evening and good night.